And so I picked up the hint that he's trying to tell me something. I put him in the truck and took him down to a corner and my sister picked him up. And, and she took him home. And then I ended up keeping him and the woman that said that was her dog, I took him back to give to her. And, and then she said, I have to give it back to you because he cried all night. And so that was a kind of an emotional thing that resonated with me and I thought I'd make a book about it. Cause it says something spiritual beyond just what happens in your day to day life. And if dogs can teach you about love more than almost anybody can.
Welcome to a brand new episode of Candid Conversations. I have a very special guest today. He is a very active in the community, an active environmentalist. And I'm talking about the Chair of the Sierra Club, Mount Diablo Group, Jim Blickenstop. Welcome, Jim.
Well, thank you, Aparna. It's kind of interesting, this setup. I was kind of curious of an archive kind of thing you're doing. It kind of has a historical aspect to it, which I appreciate.
It does, and we want to make sure every new resident who wants to learn more about San Ramon, San Ramon Valley gets an opportunity. And so, thank you for being here today. Ever since we went into this shelter in place, I'm sure environmentalists all around the world must have breathed a sigh of relief that environment is getting a little breather. Is that true?
Yeah, the, the environment breathes a sigh of relief because it needed a break, didn't it?
It did, with all the cars off the road, I think it helped a little bit somewhat. I mean, I don't know how long it's going to last. So how does an environmentalist who is so active work when you are sheltered in place? Do you, do you still get to save the environment the same way? Or do you have to use a different approach?
It's a little bit different, a little bit the same. Because a lot of the things you do through the environmental network and everything is through phone or computer or connections with emails. And that, and that becomes very much a key part of the documentation of what you're trying to do. And in fact, with the context of getting everything done correctly, you almost at some point have to have things in writing. And I learned that early on to get things in writing as compared to verbal. And it's just part of the equation, right? So I naturally do that. And that is to say I'd be lost without my computer. That's, that's what that is really saying.
So you feel environmental can be tackled in person and through the use of technology. But the impact is going to be just the same. There's no change in that.
I think the essence of the impact is still there and has to be recognized, even though it might not have that in-person touch as much as it did a few months ago. But it's still very much there and alive. And if you have any skills at all in, in writing and dealing with details of environmental issues, you're still on top of it, more or less.
So before we start talking about your journey, how you came to San Ramon and things you've been involved in, you served in the United States Navy. You served the, in the United States Postal Service. You also received an award, which is pretty commendable, the Million Mile Club Award. And wrote two books. Environmental work that you've been doing over the decades and somewhat dabbled in politics along the way. How does a person find time to do all these things and be impactful? And is there a secret to you achieving this?
Oh, I, I shouldn't give away any secrets, should I?
It would be good to know. And if you can talk about these aspects a little bit, how it happened, the US Navy? How was your experience? What, how, what elements of those did you use in your environmental journey as well?
It was just an evolutionary process of the age bracket I was in and what was in front of me at that time. And the service was obviously in front of me to take care of that aspect of it. And the Navy seemed a good way to get some kind of academic application to my service. So I went into a school for fire control technician, which means you're controlling the guns as they're shooting guns and so forth. And that was a radar related technical job. And that, I, I kind of found that very useful in terms of my time with the Navy. And that worked out pretty well. And then, but at that time I wasn't environmental. I was just trying to see what was going on in life, right? Yeah. And then I went on to, to graduate in Sacramento State University a few years later with a mathematics degree. And that was only because I tried mechanical engineering. And it was so dry and so boring and so tedious. I, I said, I could, I cannot feature my future, excuse the expression, with mechanical engineering. And the leftover of that was, well, I got a lot of these other courses I've taken and math as a background. So I just went ahead and finished up in mathematics, which I found surprisingly easy compared to some of the things you had to do with mechanics. So you just don't know what aspects of things appeal to you. And so I just, I ended up with a degree in that, which has served me very well. Not necessarily in terms of a job exactly, but just in terms of understanding environmental documents and understanding the mitigations, all the numbers involved when they're doing environmental impacts and so forth. The traffic numbers, just all this stuff. And, and then without realizing the time, the math background allowed me to cut through the window dressing, if you were, as it were, and see what the essence of it was. And so that, that made it a lot easier for me because there's a lot of stuff you can get caught up in the veneer of a presentation of issues and it's not really the essence of it. And surprisingly for me, the essence of a lot of issues comes down to numbers.
But, but at the time you were doing this, you had no clue that where your path will take you. You were just doing it because you enjoyed mathematics.
Yeah, I, I had a GI benefits program that allowed me to go to college. That sounded like a good idea, you know? And then it was about to run out. So I had to get serious about getting a degree after three, four years. You gotta show something. And so I cut to the mathematics part of it and jammed it into the last semester to, to graduate with that degree. And that, that was just kind of the thing to do at the time. And in retrospect, I was very wise to do that, but at the time I didn't know I was. It just turned out pretty good.
So did it turn into a job opportunity? When you started your first job, was it related to the field of mathematics?
No, I applied for some things that had to do with mathematics, but it was such a specialized degree in terms of things that like Lawrence Livermore Lab and things like that. They wanted a more broad type of degree and experience. And so it was a little bit too singular in its purpose as, as a part of what a degree is for. So I ended up part-time, as it were, being a mailman. And that part-time turned out to be like 40 years.
And let's talk about that. You, you exemplified what a, a perfect career, if that's a word, should be like. And you received a very big award and it's a Million Mile Club Award. Can you tell us a little bit about that? And how that shift into the postal service job happened? What was the thing you were looking for?
Well, it happened because I'd gone out of the Navy and oddly enough, to some extent, I liked the structure. It's predictable, it's solid, and it, it is what it is, you know? Certain discipline evolved, which, you know, is useful for purposes like that. And then as a backup thing for applying for other jobs, post office became available. And my math background allowed me to qualify for the tests that were involved and then the interviews. So that turned out to be pretty good. And as I got used to it, it just became something that was, something that was a good annual income for me. And then it allowed me to have time after my eight hour day to do other things. And that's kind of opened the door for looking into environmental stuff.
And, and tell us about the Million Mile Club Award. Was it a surprise? Were you, were you aware that if you reach a certain number of miles as a safe driver, you are going to be given this award? How was it? Take us back to that time and how it felt.
Well, it was a pretty simple deal. It wasn't in my mind that auspicious. I was just kind of flattered. It just meant I'd been around the block a few times for million miles. That's a lot of traveling. So, and it was kind of nice to have a milestone that was a little bit unusual. You know, most people don't do that. And I felt good about it, but it was just kind of a benchmark or what do you call it? For that time in the post office. And that was like five years ago, maybe. So I got more miles under my belt now.
Now, is this, is this considered a very exclusive club where you have your own little thing going on and nobody else can be a part of it? Is, is that privileged to us?
No, no, it's just, it's a piece of paper that you hang up with pride. I don't know where it is right now. And it recognizes your stick-to-it-iveness, so to speak. And the fact you don't necessarily get a million miles of recognition if you've had accidents. So it sort of said, maybe I'm not accident prone. If I go a million miles without, must have been into somebody. I thought that was kind of something. If you're accident prone, of course, you don't stay as a postal carrier for very long.
We don't want our mail to go missing. We want it delivered on time. So tell us about your journey, why San Ramon? What was the reason you moved to San Ramon? Obviously it became a, a place that brought out your calling and, and you accomplished a lot of things. But where were you before San Ramon?
Well, we moved from Oregon back when I was a freshman in high school. And family moved to Danville. And then from there, as I, I Navy and then got a degree in mathematics and so forth, I started to branch out into other things. I saw a condo opportunity to buy on Fountainhead in San Ramon. And I got my foot in the door in real estate, which seems to always be a good idea. Get your foot in the door, get something. And then that expanded with equity and eventually ended up using that as a down payment for where I am now. And in the process of doing that, certain issues came up with San Ramon that sort of needed me to pay attention to because some of it didn't make sense. It was hillside protections, for example, very key thing. The aesthetics of the city is very much the identity of the city. And to the extent that's degraded, then you end up with other cities. I won't mention any names, but I could, that don't have that same feel or look to them. And so it started with Greg Carr to look at getting a stronger hillside protection ordinance in and lobbied the city for it and nothing happened. And so we decided just to do a petition. And, and we ended up with a petition that became an ordinance and a law in the general plan. And that was a hillside protection ordinance, one ninety-seven. And that's still in there to some degree. There's been iterations because of several more general plans. But it's still recognized to a large degree as a standard the city tries to respect.
Now, how challenging was it to convince people at that time? San Ramon was a small, much smaller city at that time. Walking door to door, getting the petition signed, getting people to pay attention. How challenging was it?
It was just like you probably expect. The good news was it was not unknown to a lot of people. The people were aware that there was a lot of flexibility in the protection plans, which is a word for ignoring some of the more strident requirements. And so as we went door to door, people were aware of the issue. And that made it a lot easier than if you had to explain an issue that they weren't up to speed on. And that, that we had, we got past that threshold and then signature gathering. It, it's kind of like beating your head against the wall. It, it just feels so good when you finally stop. And then we had to do that for five weeks or so. And, and then we were there. So it, it worked out pretty good. The response was great.
And we have to remind people, this was a time when technology was not used the way it is used today. So obviously a very grassroots effort to bring about the change, to protect the hills and the ridge lines and take care of the environment and the characteristics that define San Ramon. As a result of this work, you were elected to the city council. And you served, you filled a vacant seat at that time. Can you explain that and how it was, how was your experience on the city council?
I think there is Barry Nudelman that was, had a two-year term, only went two years. And there was a two-year term that opened up remainder. I, I went for that term and I believe at that time Greg Carr went for a four-year term. And I got Barry Nudelman's term and then Greg got a four-year term on the council. So we started on the council that way. A lot of it led from save our hills. We decided, well, if we don't get up there, the follow-through won't be as strong as we'd like it to be. And, and that was quite a while ago and it worked out okay. There wasn't any shock or surprises. Maybe the fact we won was a little bit of a surprise. But it was kind of an interesting experience. I, I liked the idea of seeing issues from inside the government, up on the panel and also outside, because that's obviously where most people see what's happening. And they got to see that perspective of looking back at somebody like me talking, if that makes sense. And it, it helped me understand both sides of the equation as I went on to stay with the environment, the Sierra Club and still involved today with that.
So why did you not seek reelection? Did you feel you accomplished what you went in there to accomplish? Or did you feel you could do more work as a Sierra Club person than as a councilman?
I did seek reelection, but I lost. There was a strong campaign against me for people that didn't like my slow growth attitude. I was an extremist in some people's minds. And now it's just, to me, it's common sense. But, and so I lost, but unfortunately for some people perhaps in that city, that didn't mean I was going to go away. And at that point, I suddenly realized a lot of like my freedom to pick and choose and, and focus on issues that were key to me that you don't really have when you're on the council. It's more structured in terms, you have to follow along with the program and an agenda. And so I, I adapted quite well to just getting back to the freedom of, of getting involved in environmental group and focusing on issues that are key to that environmental purpose. So, and once I was involved, I stayed involved.
Why Sierra Club? What was it about Sierra Club that attracted you to be a part of that organization?
It just seemed natural. It was where my mind was at the time about environmental issues and development. It seemed like it was overly destructive of the environment. And the Sierra Club was a natural place to go in terms of having collaborative support for that kind of point of view. And it did turn out to be a pretty good fit because I kind of have a place in the Sierra Club with the Mount Diablo Group and the chapter. And, and that involvement kind of helps with the broader picture of having an effect on things that you think are important, you know? And protecting open space and, and quality of life issues for residents that can see a lot of negative impacts from growth. I think those are issues that needed to be brought, still need to be brought up today.
So let's talk about those. You've been very active in the community, very involved with protecting the environment. And that's something very dear to me, open space and environment. Let's talk about some of the things that have happened in San Ramon over the years. Let's start with MUDs. MUDs was a big deal back then. It was one of the most unique concepts that was presented to residents, to the public. The public-private partnership playing out with the MUDs restaurant. Take us back to that and let's talk about that.
Yeah, MUDs goes back many, many years. It just seemed to be an ongoing unresolved issue for just years. There was all kinds of agencies involved, redevelopment. And it had different components that came and went and applied to it. And it just never seemed to be resolved satisfactorily. It seemed clear to me from my point of view that MUDs was a classic focal point for something unique to San Ramon that could be a park, but be special for San Ramon because the history of the restaurant and how it was ahead of its time in terms of organic gardening and organic foods, all the things that were maybe a little ahead of their time are, were super relevant. And it, it seemed obvious to me that that should be recognized as a park site and enhanced for its history and its usefulness as a park site next to a creek and all the other parts of it that have a little bit of heritage for San Ramon to them. And unfortunately, it just seemed to linger and, and go on and on and not get resolved and, and get different iterations for the longest time. And all, all, all those iterations seemed to be related to some kind of partial development of it or a public-private partnership, which means partial development. And that didn't seem like a, a way to recognize the importance of the site. And, and I myself and many others, and I have to give credit to Frenette Armstrong, I think her last name is, that did a great job. She really led the charge for the last two or three years on that and did all the heavy homework and detail to get it presented in a way that actually accomplished a goal. We finally got it recognized, I think as a ninety acre park, I believe is what it is. But it, it took forever and there was a lot of work.
So a lot of people used to patronize that restaurant, the farm-to-table concept, seasonal foods being served. Do you feel San Ramon residents were more ahead of their times than the rest of the valley by, by even having a restaurant like that and a concept like that, which was brand new essentially?
Yeah, it was ahead of its time. You got to give a lot of credit to the MUDs family because they saw the future and they wanted to put something, establishment in that recognized that. And then that drew attention from others like myself and everybody else said, yeah, that's, that's cool. And I don't see that in other cities as much. And I thought, from the point I realized the, the issues involved and how important it was, I thought the city should really run with that. That, that has a sense of identity for the city that is, is special, that should be recognized. And it, it took a lot of years to get that grassroots effort going. And now with Frenette near the end, which did a fantastic job, it, it finally came to fruition. But it was a lot of work and there was always that threat and that opportunity to go sideways, to do something that sort of pays for itself, you know, public-private, you know? Money is a big issue for people more than environment sometimes. And, and then it finally, the good effort, the strong effort and never thinking you're really going to win. You're not sure what's going to happen. It finally pays off. And I've seen that happen a few times on the issues and it keeps me going. Because if you win a few, you don't have to win them all. But if you win a few, it kind of gives you the energy to say, well, see, hey, that's pretty good. Something good happened in my point of view, anyway.
So let's talk about how an environmental group evaluates and then decides how much, how much of impact they want to make and what are they looking for? And now MUDs Restaurant has a creek that is, that has essentially been a challenge even now. How, how does an environmental group look at something like that and then evaluate if this is something worth fighting for? If this is something we need to move on from? What are some things you look at?
Well, MUDs as a particular issue, that was more local. I, I don't believe I ever tried to get that as a Sierra Club issue. Because Sierra Club, it has to be very particular. They have to pick their battles and they have to have huge significance. And MUDs, I, I did more of a local effort with MUDs, along with other leaders that I was just helping. And it worked out well. Grassroots doesn't always need a big organizational recognition to accomplish things. Sometimes it helps. And that, we did pretty good just on that grassroots effort. And now that it's in place, there's opportunity now to enhance it and expand it. So see, one stage can lead to another. And the fact we're short of parks on the west, north side of the city is pretty obvious to people. And MUDs is a great opportunity to expand some parks to keep up with some of the growth plans they have. So I see it as an ongoing first or second phase of something that'll end up being even a, a bigger park and more successful park than it is now.
So you spoke about grassroots and there is power in grassroots movements. And one of them was the Norris Canyon HOV ramps. You weren't against the HOV lanes, but it was the ramps that were bothersome. Tell us a little bit on that, a little history and how your involvement became even bigger than you probably imagined when you first started.
Yeah, you're never sure what you're getting into until you get into it. And then what do you do? Get out? No, you're, you're stuck, you know, so to speak. But that you just go in optimistically and then things happen or don't. And then there was something that was going on with the city. They were doing some transportation plans with the county. And a lot of it seemed to be administrative and boilerplate. And then reading the fine print, it dawned on some people in the west side that this is opening up the door for traffic coming down a ramp onto Norris Canyon Road has a serious outlet for six eighty traffic. And Norris Canyon Road has houses along the driveway is right on the road. And it's a neighborhood-serving road. And it was a bad fit. And as we looked into it, it got even worse in terms of the impacts it was going to have. So there was a group forum, save, I said, no HOV ramps in San Ramon, something like that. And did a lot of lobbying and a lot of environmental work. It was not a slam duck. It took years. There was initiatives in the county that had to include an HOV expenditure, $200 million for ramps we didn't want, at least in the neighborhoods. And that complicated matters for the whole issue progressing. And with that complicating thing says, I think at the time it's two-thirds vote needed for, and you don't want to poison pill an initiative that needs two-thirds of a vote. And it was not getting much supported in San Ramon. So they finally pulled that out of their Plan A decision-making process. And, and the EIR on it got a little old and they didn't want to do a new one. So it finally de-evolved from a wonderful, huge, ugly cement project. You're going to put all these cars in the neighborhoods to, it's too expensive and not worth the trouble. And so, hey, another success.
Another success. So for residents who may not understand what EIR is, the environmental impact report, but let's talk a little bit about that. What is that document's purpose? And what essentially would you, from an environmentalist point of view, look at? Traffic, of course, is a big thing, but what other elements would you encourage residents to look at?
On any particular issue or a particular, just any?
Overall, and EIR, a draft EIR, what should people be looking at?
Oh, I looked at things that I, I was somewhat skilled at in terms of protecting the environment, wetlands, habitat, creeks, view sheds, hill protection. And that can occupy a lot of your time, just focusing on those issues. And to a partial degree, I looked at traffic because with the numbers involved, if the numbers don't add up, I could see what was going on. And so you pretty quickly find issues that are important. It pretty much rise to surface and some issues like, I don't know, history or geology or maybe noise are kind of secondary to larger picture. What's this going to mean for the cityscape in five or 10 years?
So that was my other question. Do you work with geologists to see the land? I mean, any other group, would you be working with them or just do it from strictly an environmental perspective?
Well, biologists that also study wildlife and plants, we've used them to get expert opinions on things that would be destructive to wildlife corridors and creeks and so forth. And even to try to document the presence of certain rare species. So we've often on worked with biologists more than other groups. Sometimes a transportation group because they have experts and get into gritty details of that. A lot of times it's just people that know the field within the Sierra Club or, or group that are sufficiently up to speed to do the, the work, the expert work that's needed. So it's kind of like you grab where you can. And sometimes you need that expert and sometimes you already have them. So it's, it's generally worked out okay. We do collaborative things, a lot with grassroots. Sierra Club and grassroots often have the same issues because they're on the front lines. They see the impacts and the ugly outcome and the destruction of surrounding open space. And they're on the front lines of what's happening. So I never disrespect them by calling them nimby's. I mean, just because you're on the front line, I think you should get respect for the fact you're seeing what's going on and you sound the alarm. And a lot of times we And a lot of times we have a very compatible um sense of of protection that starts out with grassroots people getting involved and then Sierra Club seeing what's going on. And I like I said, Sierra Club has to pick and choose if it's a serious issue or if it's a secondary one. We love to tackle them all, but you know.
So when the grassroots movement gets big enough, uh, is that when Sierra Club feels there is um, a a potential for partnership with the community to be impactful um at a at a bigger level? Is that how it this plays out? When, because I'm going to talk about two, um, the Tassahara Valley and the the urban limit line there and the Faria that now, which is called the Preserve Projects. Uh, two very big um projects that were being talked about. And uh, is that how Sierra Club gets involved? Like that's real grassroots level, very vocal residents trying to save open space. Um, how did that, how does that work out?
Yeah, it's um kind of a combination of a a local commitment of local people that are obviously serious and obviously don't have some secondary protection of my developer rights or secondary issues that complicate the matters. And it's also the magnitude of the negative effect if we were to ignore the issue. That's why Tassera Parks became so important to Sierra Club. Uh, when we work in collaboration with other environmental groups, because that's a way of opening up development in the protected, on the protected side of the limit line, the growth boundary. And uh, it opens the door to that. And uh, it could just be a first phase of many developments on the wrong side of the line that would be super detrimental to trying to protect that area out there. And so that issue is so important. Sierra Club felt the ramifications of it are almost county wide. Because if you let that go through, the urban line goes all around the county. And then there's other similar situations where they want to pop through for thirty or fifty acres over here. Well, you did over in the president setting thing that happens. And so that's where Sierra Club has got involved. And I I took the lead to some degree in terms of writing editorials and stuff that helped clarify the issue. And um, it's it's still going on.
Well, I was going to ask you to pick a side, east or west, because there are two different things we were going to talk about since you picked east. Um, let's talk about the Tassahara Valley. Now, some people say opening up the sixteen hundred acres, moving the urban limit line will protect that area more. And then there is the second side that says, no, it is already protected. There are several layers of protection. We do not need to extend that urban limit line. How do you explain to residents who in the middle of this have no clue uh which side to lean towards? What would then uh an explanation be? What should they be thinking about?
Well, there are two entities that have influence on Tassera that could end up developing it and perhaps messing with the open space protections we'd like to see for the area out there. One's the county and one's the city. And then Major W, a few years ago, uh, we put on the ballot a measure that would say the city should not expand sixteen hundred acres or whatever, it might have been more than that. Because in the, under the auspices of city control and protections, they also planned to put in hundreds and hundreds of homes out there. So it was really a development plan. And just because it's done by the city doesn't mean it's a good thing, you know? You can have bad plans from county and city. So that became a ballot measure and I think W lost by seventy two to twenty eight percent because the people said, yeah, it didn't quite make sense to go out there to protect it. And then ended up all this development. And uh, that put a chill on any major efforts for a number of years. And then this Tassera Parks Plan came along that was more incremental. I thought a hundred twenty five units and thirty to fifty acres. And we're just going to go this far off the line and that'll be good. And except the county wouldn't take steps to block that being a precedent. They they said, well, we asked them, well, let's just make this a one and done deal. Just verify that you're not going to allow this kind of thing to continue on other parts of line and really undermine it. And for some reason, they didn't do that. And that made us very nervous about what the ultimate outcome would be here. And so that was uh where it stands now and it's still a work in progress.
So when you compare the uh Save Our Hills movement to this one, how easy or challenging was this one? I mean, obviously, people were more aware and um Major W lost. Um, but how how difficult was it for you particularly leading the effort um to get the word out into the community?
For the Tassahara Parks Project, one there that one that's right out there today in the planning state. Yeah, well, that was a collaborative effort with environmental groups more than Save Our Hills. From Save Our Hills was grassroots, just a bunch of people here that cared about protecting city open space and creeks, et cetera. And up in Tassera, it it was a county wide issue because of the urban limit line. And we worked in conjunction with the Tassahara Group, grassroots group, uh, Green Belt Alliance and Sierra Club and one or two others that united, you kind of needed that front because of the broader issues involved. And uh, the more negative possibly the outcome if you didn't take it serious. And so that was a little bit of a different approach, but basically the premise was the same. Uh, while we have the opportunity to save important parts of uh surrounding open space and environmental setting of the community, I think in the long term, more will appreciate that that has been saved. Because it's hard to go back and say that should have been saved. And now you have a lot of asphalt and cement where you used to have something that was quite aesthetically a compliment to the developments that do happen. They can be integrated together, but it's too easy for certain interests to get overly ambitious to not worry about that aspect of it.